Mr. Chairman.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. We are out of our executive session. There'll be no action taken at this time. And we're going to move right on down our agenda. The next item is an action item. V Corp. This is a presentation from V Corp on an amended protocol.
What's it'll take it to?
Request for opioid settlement funds.
Well, let's ask about that. Let's try and make that work.
Okay.
Welcome. Come on up. You guys are next.
He was received a letter today from United Payette.
Yeah.
On a task force.
Oh, yeah. All right. Go ahead. Come up to the table here.
Awesome. Can I? Can I give you a paper? Is that okay?
Yeah, and you can take one of these back and set it on the table.
That's the conversation I've been having with him.
Not sure which one here. See, this is long enough.
Good morning, Mr. Lyle.
Oh, you're up.
Yeah.
What are you doing here?
Sit there right in front of me.
Part of the.
We're on V Corp now? He's always been on forever. He's on my steering committee. I'm gonna just steal one. Oh, yeah.
I'm part of them down here just for the fun of seeing the. Whoa, you in action.
Perfect.
We're in action today.
He's gonna run for my job when I'm done.
Hey, do you have time for one minute?
Sure.
So I'm working on this report for the BSU, sorry, that H C R I group.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm having to report something on the health. So I looked in a U S News World Report. They rate all the counties on these different variables. And Valley County is number one again in America for community vitality.
Yay!
For providing social services to their constituents and having their constituents engaged. You know, I think that is incredible accolade.
That is pretty good.
So I thought I'd come down at least, I think, three of you know, you own part of that.
For community?
Yeah. Go, uh, Google U S News and World Report Healthiest Counties. And then they rank all the counties. Valley County used to be overall ranking in the top five of America at one time, but it were housing and a couple suicides and, you know, you, but anyhow, on that one variable, we're still 100. That's the highest rating they give. 100 in America. Don't give one 100.
And we don't want to advertise anymore, while, because everybody's moving here now.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's go out and have a cigarette and talk about that.
We're on video next week.
People need to know that we're doing good work, you know, as government entities. We get killed all the time on the work we're doing. People need to know we're doing good things.
Yeah.
We will.
Okay.
Post that one.
We're gonna move on. Let's talk about the protocol. Um, I like a lot of these. This is a lot of work whoever put this together.
Thank you.
Um, the only one that I had a little bit of heartburn about was under applicant responsibility number five. Because it is highly recommended if the award you present evaluation data to the Board of Commissioners every six months. In addition to the quarterly financial reports. I would like to have that, it shall. Something like that, not highly recommended, but it shall be a requirement. The reason I say that, Shelley, is because when we give money away to people, we have to be very careful that those people don't end up in jail.
I totally agree. And, and that's why I wanted to present this, because I didn't want to shawl anybody without your permission. So I would be happy to adjust the protocol to say shall. Um, because this really is, is your, we developed this in 2022 for the board. So, and if there's anything else that you feel that we need to change, that's why I'm here today, so that we can reflect what, what.
No, the only other one that, and I kind of talked to Doug about it, and they do have the right, but somebody comes in for opioid funds and V Corp turns them down. We need some kind of a system where they can appeal your decision to us. But then Doug pointed out, uh, I don't remember which one it was. It might have been part of number five. Where was that?
So are you saying an individual requests help and they get denied? Are you talking about a?
Yes.
You know, a group that's actually.
It doesn't matter, anybody, individual or group, if V Corp says no, because they qualify. Or there's already a group over here that's doing that function, so. There's, uh, the only reason I say that is because where do they go?
This is a recommendation.
Your decision.
Yeah, and you know, that's a good point. We don't have an appeal process built in, uh, if they're denied. So we did say that we would communicate, because it's just a letter of support. But they could come, we could put in there that they could appeal it to the, the Board of, uh, to the V Corp consortium, that they could get on the agenda. I could add that, that if they want to do appeal.
I never see that now.
It wasn't included, Mr. Chairman, but I just.
Or was it?
They could appeal directly to the Board of County Commissioners, which ultimately are in control of.
Yeah.
They can just come without a letter of.
Without a letter of support.
It needs to state that in here, though, I think Doug is.
So recently, we had a situation where somebody was asking for funding, and our prosecuting, or our civil attorney is advising us that anybody we give funds to, we should have an MOU with. And so really making sure that we either have a contract, we have an MOU, we have something that specifically states what they're going to be doing with those funds. So that the county would have an expectation that you're going to provide these services. And then have something to hold them accountable to. And that speaks to what Elle's talking about, is it holds all of us accountable to a specific series of, um, you know, this is what you're doing with these funds. And, and we can go back and look at that the next year, and when they check back in with us, you know, we can make sure that that happened. And I don't know what your feeling is. Do we need to hear from them every six months? Our schedules are very full, so I don't know if it's an annual check-in when they're something, or if it should be six months.
And I really think that's up to you. I think there was some discussion when we were working on the protocol last time, because we, we weren't having them come back. The only, I think, the report that they get is financial for Doug, right? It's not related to, because I think.
Statistics. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. Thank you. Statistic, so it's just statistics. So what we added to this protocol from the last one is actually, and under number two is H and I, that they have to provide support, that programming is evidence-based or evidence-informed, which is what's in the Exhibit A, and that they have to describe how they're going to evaluate the effectiveness of their program. This is new in the protocol, so that they can show some measurements. And we talked about six months, because they weren't coming back, there wasn't any of this. So whatever I think the Board feels would be helpful, and it could be a written report, it wouldn't necessarily have to be an in-person report, but it could coincide with the financial reporting too.
Even a written report would be worth seeing. Doug, do we get audited on these funds?
We haven't yet, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The, uh, what our responsibility is, is to report annually to the Idaho Attorney General's Office of how the funds are being expended. So I provide them with an annual report of the funds received and the funds, uh, that have been expended out and how it meets the Exhibit A requirement. And then I would assume that if the Idaho Attorney General's Office had concerns about distribution of those funds, they would contact me to begin an, an outside audit. I don't know what that process looks like, and quite honestly, I don't want.
Too bad, because the outside audit really teaches you how to look, what data you're looking for, what they're looking for. Um, and we can, I'm not going to be in the board, so it's up to these guys. If they want it six months, do they want it with the quarterly financial report? Hey, we took in six new cases in this quarter of suicide or mental health or substance abuse, and we are counseling them. Those are the kind of things I think that we need to kind of see. Or we just hired a whole bunch of people and we're not doing anything.
And I really think it's up to the Board. I can tell you from my process, at least through Central District Health, even though I'm only required, you started out quarterly with HRSA, because all my funding, including my position, is funded through HRSA. I have sub-grants for the folks that we pass the money through, which, for this current grant is Ignite and Yak. And I, it's so much easier for me to track quarterly, and I think that they get in a rhythm of doing their reporting, and it's not so cumbersome to try and find six months' worth of, of data. And if there are, you're doing financial reporting to me, it would make sense to tack on, oh, and can you add your outcome measures? And then.
Quarterly.
Quarterly. And with the financial reporting would be my suggestion. And then that way, it all just falls together, and then they're doing all of it at once, and then they're, they're done. And then you can kind of see how they're doing, um, and every three months.
Yeah, so if it's quarterly, I mean, it doesn't have to come to us. I mean, it can come to our clerk. You know, and he's tracking that anyhow.
They can send it on to us.
No, I think we need to see it, Neil. I really do. I don't, I think that's important that we, I don't want to lay all this work on Doug for one thing.
Well, and I don't mind partnering with Clerk Miller if that would be reasonable to the Board to help get, because they, we work really closely with a lot of these partners anyways. I'm happy to send a reminder. It kind of falls within my role as project director in the role that I have with the consortium and the collaboration. So, um, I'm happy to, to partner with that and help facilitate getting outcome due.
You have to do like an MOU with the sub-grant winners? What do they make you do for them when you hand them money?
Central District, we have sub-grantee contracts, yes.
You do have contracts.
Yeah, and we renew them every year, even though our, our allotment's a four-year allotment.
So it's like a scope of work, and this is what we expect out of this?
Yep. I have a work plan, yep. I have the budget, what they're allowed to spend, termination clause.
That covers us.
Yeah.
As far as our money too.
Yeah.
So, and you said something we've been discussing is, well, right now, we don't know how much opioid funds every year we're going to get. And so right now, it's kind of like first come, first served. We've talked about doing a bucket so that people do apply for grants. So it's not just whoever gets through the door first gets funding, which I don't necessarily agree with, you know?
That's why we created V Corp, though, Sherry, was we realized that we're going to get all through the year until we're just down to zero. Let's put a committee out there that can evaluate these applications for us.
But they're still getting the first one in is the first one that comes to us.
And we just do letters of, of support based on this protocol. So we really have three steps of review. I, I, as a project director, they, the, the, um, applicant sends, they can send me a draft letter. They don't have to. They usually do. Send me a draft letter to make sure it meets the protocol. And then once we kind of work that out, then it goes to the steering committee. And Lyle is our, one of our steering committee members. We have five members on the steering committee. So it's, Lyle's the member at large, and then Tracy Jameson is the treatment chair. Ms. DeRuska is the recovery chair. Sylvia Ryan is the prevention chair, and then the project director. So we, they come and present to us, we take a look at it. A lot of times, we have them adjust the letter before it goes to the full consortium, and then the consortium takes a look at it and votes on it. So it really kind of has three steps. But we, you're right, Commissioner, and we do not prioritize this funding over that. It's just, doesn't meet the, doesn't meet the Exhibit A, and did you do everything we asked in the protocol? That's really all we're doing, and giving a letter of support for you all to consider whether or not to fund it.
So conflict of interest with Tracy?
Uh, we have a contract of, uh, conflict of interest in our bylaws, and she, yes, they declare, especially during vote. Uh, it doesn't go for a full vote until it goes in front of the consortium, and yes, that's on record.
The consortium votes, not your committee.
We, yes, we, the steering committee, as it states in the protocol, makes a recommendation whether or not to move it forward to the, they can still take the letter to the consortium even, but we'll give a recommendation, we don't agree or we agree. But the full consortium can outvote the steering committee, which has never happened. But they can, they get to vote on it regardless of the steering committee recommendation. Makes sense? So we can say we don't, yeah, no, and the full consortium could say yes.
Checks and balances.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I like this, but I, I do, you know, my feeling is, is that we start a grant pool, and then we get all the letters together at the same time. We look at the programs that they're going to be doing. And then we do a one, once a year, we will disseminate the funds. That's my.
You know, it might be best to do that.
So many.
Towards the end of the year, before the next budget year, so maybe June or July, so that we know there's five requests for these funds. We've got this much money, so we can budget that for next year. And then anything extra that comes in through the year in opioid funds, then we can maybe open it back up.
Or we just save it.
I'm just trying to come up with an idea towards.
Doug, do you know, do we get it at the same time of year? Have we been seeing that check at the same time of year?
It's, no. Comes in all through the year.
I'm wondering if we don't compile them instead of giving it out pieces, parts, you know? Because there could be one project that might be really something we want to support. If we had a hundred thousand in that fund, it might make a lot more sense for the community to do one big thing versus, you know, a ton of little things.
Yeah, and the consortium just wants to be your partner in all of this. And so however the Board feels is best to distribute the funds, I really look to you for that. I get this protocol was kind of the beginning stages of the process, because people were just coming, I think is how it started, without running it through the consortium. So this has been a really good process to start, I think, to start things, so.
And I think this is a great place to start. But I bet within a very short time, we're going to say, you're going to have to have an application in by a certain date. And then we're going to look at all of them at one time. Maybe rank them, I don't know. And then they'll come to the Commissioners and they'll say, we have enough to cover the whole of them, or we don't have enough, we have to cut two or three off or whatever, depending on the budget.
Yeah, and we had two, two requests that the consortium reviewed this month. And so I asked for the, it was Ignite and McCall Mobile Medical to hold off the schedule coming before you until we had this meeting today to make sure this is the process we still want to use. So I, I kind of gave them a heads up. We did support both letter, both requests with letters of support. But I, I said, I'm not sure. I wanted to see what next steps were with the Board.
Commissioners, they're on for next week, but if the Commissioners are inclined to postpone, we can move them back.
Doug, how much do we have in there right now?
Approximately eighty-five thousand.
Has any of that been committed?
None of it.
None of it? So we are actually increasing in funds every year?
We received, yeah. Last year, we received a hundred and four thousand in fiscal year 2024. We projected eighty and received twenty-four thousand more than what was projected. Because that's what we, we tried to project what we saw the previous year.
Previous year, yeah.
But as I've kind of cautioned the Commissioners, we don't know if that's going to be continued each year, year after year. But for fiscal year 2025, we have projected eighty thousand again. But as of right now, uh, based on the report that I submitted to the Attorney General's Office back in July, we have approximately eighty-five thousand available.
And that's the issue I have, is the Attorney General's very forthcoming on the settlements and what he expects to see. And so we can't really guess, or we can guesstimate, but we can't have concrete numbers here.
Yeah.
And I talked to him about it. I says, boy, it'd be really nice if you came out with, hey, we expect a big check two months from now from Rite Aid or whoever. That's going to go on for sixteen years or twelve years, or it's a one lump sum. You get it once and that's all you get. And we don't know that.
It's tough.
And it's like, he goes, we're setting us out here for a big crash if we're not careful, but, you know, I've done the same bullshit once.
I think what we should do is, you know, just put them on pause for a minute.
Okay.
And put out the word that grants are open, that this is the amount of money that we have, and let everybody apply at the same time. And then, you know, if you guys would rank them in some way. But they also have to sign a contract moving forward, some kind of a contract.
Well, I like the contract idea unless you've already got one.
Well, we have our sub-grant contract that we contract, I mean, Central District Health contracts with our sub-grantees. I'd be happy to share that template with.
With the applicants?
We'll go through the civil attorney.
Yeah, if you want to draft our draft copy, I could send that. And then, yeah, your attorney could take a look at that and modify it as needed for the county. It'd be a place to start. It's a template that we have, yeah.
That'd be great, Shelley.
Yeah, you bet.
And then I think we still need to change number five.
Okay, done.
Do the evaluation data quarterly with the financial.
Yeah, I think that's great.
It is not just recommended. It shall be required that the awarding present evaluation and quite financial quarterly. And it can be in a written form. It does not have to be in front of us, but we see that.
I think the written form's better, because.
Yeah, and we can store that data.
Let our agendas.
And submitted with the financial report, by the financial reporting?
Yes.
That's a great idea, okay.
And Doug, if you could send that on, that would be great.
I'll get this revised and get this back to the Board. I'll probably get it to you tomorrow.
Would you like us to go ahead and approve that pending that change?
Great.
Because I think we're just going to slow the process down if we wait for this to be re-typed. Does that work for you guys? Well, let's see.
We need to do something different, though, if we're going to request all of it at once. It needs to be in that annually, there will be an opportunity for, you know, a grant opportunity.
Yeah, but we need to set some firm dates. Where's, it's got to be, the way the money comes in, how do you do that, though?
You just hold it until the next grant opportunity, and then you know how much you've got for the year.
Yeah, I mean, people are always out there sitting there wanting money. We know that.
Well, my only concern is, is our, some of these programs, you know, are we going to put them out of business? Because we're holding funds that they need to keep their door open tomorrow. And that, that would be a specific situation. If they, if that's the way that it is, then we need to hear that. I mean, how many groups are actually giving this type of work that need the opioid?
I can tell you that we've, um, the letters of support that have been funded through the consortium, uh, through the process has been McCall Mobile Medical for the, um, MOUD, the, the indication management. And that's Courtney, that's, she's got a ten thousand dollar request that we just reviewed. The first one was in 2020. The, the Board funded, um, Rise Up to Thrive. I think that was in like 2023, something like that. And then Ignite Idaho received a request. And then The Rock came before we had this process in place with the protocol. I think that's where this came out of. So, and then Sylvia Ryan with the life coaching have been the providers that have been funded and have received letters of support through the consortium thus far. And then Yak.
All of those will have to reapply every year.
Yeah. Well, yeah, they would, yes. And then, excuse me, and then Yak came for their.
I think, what the way I'm feeling about that, Sherry, I think it's a great idea, but, um, we should go ahead and approve this today with the minor change. And then we can work on, when are you going to go out for the grant? Is it going to be end of budget year, beginning of budget year, middle of the year? I don't know.
I think we can do, I think October's a good time, but, well, I take that back. It probably does need to be before our budget.
We have both some money in before January window? So you could do it.
I, I mean, I would say, right now, we have eighty-five thousand. Let me, um, sorry, Commissioners.
It's all right.
Is there any way you could reach out to those other groups and tell them that, you know, a grant window is open? And if they're going to ask for funding this year, they need to get it in?
I mean, the largest payment that we received was thirty-seven thousand dollars, and that was in February. Then we received a seven thousand dollar check in March, a twenty-three thousand dollar check in, um, April, and then a five thousand dollar check in September.
So it's all through the year?
So it's all through the year, but it's sporadic on the amounts.
Have we changed?
What I would propose, that if the Commissioners are inclined to do a yearly application, to have them, because we'll pretty much know the funding that is available for the next year in October, as, as you guys indicated. I mean, we know what we have right now, eight, eighty-five thousand, and we could say that's for fiscal year of 2025, and then look at what the income coming in is for 2026. And again, determine that amount in October of 2025.
Are you wanting the first of October or the end of October?
The applications?
Yeah.
I, that's for the Commissioners to.
I would think October first.
You probably, you would open it up, I guess, to the, all entities or to whoever. Anyone that is interested in opioid settlement funds, I guess, open it up in October and then accept applications for a month, and then begin the selection process in November. I, I don't know, just kind of.
Well, we'd get the applications, and we'd go to the V Corp. You guys would up or down as far as letter supports for all those? Or maybe even rank them?
The applications go to you guys.
That's putting some pressure on the V Corp Committee to rank them. And I don't know if ultimately that is something that the V Corp's inclined to do. I mean, these are, I think this needs to be flushed out.
Well, I think you're, you don't, you don't have enough funds, it's going to have to.
Yeah, I think if the scoring criteria was clear in the request for proposal process, I think we could have, um, a group of members that are from the consortium that are not applying for funds to be able to score those. So, um, you know, the consortium's a collaborative. We know what resources are in the community. We know what the needs are. We, we've got the strategic plan that we've developed. So, you know, um, there's a way I think we could, could partner with that.
And then, Doug, if we all of a sudden get a twenty-five thousand dollar check that we weren't counting on, can we, do we hold that until next budget year, or do we say, hey, we've got another twenty-five thousand, we can pick the last two on the list now, or?
My preference is we have ones a year. We compile those funds because we may have a larger pool. I mean, gosh, if we got a huge check, we might be able to buy a facility someday, you know? I mean, so, and, and just because we get a bunch of money, it doesn't have to be expended immediately.
Are we allowed to hold that money?
Yeah.
Doug, we just hold it in that fund, and the next bu, next cycle, budget cycle, it would come up and.
Because we need to know what they're going to spend it on. I mean, the most important part is that they're meeting their requirements for what they're going to spend it on. And so if it's a huge pool of funds, they're going to have to expand their projects in order to even, you know, take that much funds.
Mm-hmm.
And it just provides sustainability to this money as they move forward. I mean, if they're going to count on ten thousand dollars a year, we may end up, you know, compiling enough to have an extra two years, once it runs out or something like that, but.
So let's go ahead and approve this one with the minor adjustment. And then you can come back at your leisure with the, the budget cycle, when to apply. Applications will be taken from October one to October 31st, and we can add that into this later.
Okay.
Does that work?
That would be great. When would you like to have that back by?
That's up to you, whenever you get it.
Um, so just want the, so that we're going to do it annual?
I would guess it would be like a number seven.
Okay. I'll just get it outed in.
Well, I don't know, maybe not.
I would contact those that are, have received prior letters and just tell them you have a two-week window, you know, this year, or something like that, because we need to honor, Ignite needs, they're finding the mobile, they're finding positive rhythm later, since we're putting them on pause.
Yeah, they need to.
If we could get something and get it, you know, this time anyway, a fairly quick turnaround, so we could.
Do you need to do a public notice for a request for proposal process? And do we need to develop the request for proposals? Because to me, I cannot.
Legal side. Arnie, what's your thought on that?
There's a tiny, there's a dollar amount. If it's over, what, professional services is seventy-five thousand?
I don't, uh, there's a special regulation that affects this.
I know the RFPs now are a hundred thousand or higher.
It's, but this really isn't a RFP from us. This is a grant request.
Grant request, okay.
This is, I don't know. This eighty-five thousand that we're going to give out, we're going to go ahead and try to get that set up with the next few weeks.
Okay. Ask people to apply.
Is there a limit on applications? Because I could see somebody trying to put in for the, if you, since we're opening it up to maybe put in for the full eighty-five thousand. If there's a cap that we're only going to, you know what I mean? I think there's, there'll be a lot of, you might get some really, you might have one that tries to.
All the money.
Yeah.
And that, to me, is the sport's color.
Okay, so there's no cap? Just fill it out?
Project was one, you know, that, that was important enough to the community, important enough to V Corp, to give them a letter of support, that would be one thing.
Okay.
Because we get so many requests, it's like.
Well, we just.
It's hard.
Yeah. And I, I just, we need to make sure everybody's getting the opportunity.
What I like about this, doing it this way, is it gives somebody else that we don't know about a chance to apply. You know, you've gotten it one year, doesn't guarantee you get it the next year.
Just so I'm clear, so I'm going to send an email out to the consortium saying that, that you're going to open up the grant process for applications for October first through the fifteenth?
Yes.
And so, um, and then just request a letter of support?
I think this year you might. Now, because today's what, the fourteenth? We're already out of time.
So, yeah, no, you're right.
For this, this application process.
So, we just get through the end of October.
End of October, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, you're right, we're in October. I keep forgetting we're in October. Um, so we'd want to start this, I need a little, because I'm up here for the youth summit. I probably could get an email out. Do you want me to just send an email tomorrow?
Um, I don't know what your workload is, Shelley, so I'm going to let you make that call.
I can get it out tomorrow.
I'm sure we can be flexible. If we get some applications in in November, it's not world-ending, because this is a new process.
About the sixteenth through the thirty-first, open it up. So the applicants that have already submit letters, they wouldn't need to resubmit, okay? And then those are all going to go in front of the Board after.
You guys meet once a month?
We do. We, second Tuesday.
You're meeting this month?
October, we, October eighth. So we're going to be meeting again. I think it's the, the second Tuesday. Is that the twelfth of November?
November twelfth.
Yeah, so we'll be meeting again on November twelfth.
And if you could, that, we could, we could put in there that they, you know, November eighteenth, we would be disseminating.
Yeah, for this year.
Awesome, okay.
Yep. And that worked for most years. You know, you get your request in by the end of October, two weeks to do some kind of scoring, even.
of scoring evaluation system, recommendation to you, and then the funds could be dispersed by early December, something like that. And then, one other thought, if, do you want to have any kind of emergency, not emergency, but exceptional contingency, so that some group that needs $10,000 for something that none of us anticipated, if there's $10,000 that hasn't been spent, since you don't know the exact amount that comes in, there is some out-of-sequence opportunity, I don't know if that would be into Shelley's thing, but it'd be the rare exception rather than the norm.
An emergency funding request.
Yeah. Somebody gets a grant to do something or that needs 10,000 in matching, or, there's all kinds of things that could come up unanticipated.
So Doug, follow-up question. Do you know, in this process, do we have to be the ones to make this decision, or can we give these funds to V Corp and let them? Have oversight.
We have to, and I, I don't know, because I think the counties, no, because the county, I, I don't know, that's a good question, but the county signed on to the settlements.
Okay.
V Corp didn't necessarily sign on to the agreement for the settlements. It falls on the counties, and I think it falls on the counties for the reporting process. I, I don't know. I mean, I guess we could, if the commissioners were inclined to go that route, we, we could communicate with the attorney generals.
I don't know if the clerks are, you know, if you guys have even had this discussion anywhere, but.
I can tell you that District 4 Valley, specifically Valley County, has one of the best processes for distribution of the funds.
Nice.
It's been created, I think is vetted. I think it involves a lot of the organizations. So I will commend Valley County and the commissioners for the work that they've put into this process. I apologize if I'm being too direct, I think you're kind of complicating the matters now. I mean, I think with this, it really makes sense, but to add these new things that are coming up, it's complicating it a little bit more. But it, look, these, the commissioners are inclined to utilize these monies how they feel is best fitted.
And, and I understand your concern with that. My concern is this, we have two people putting in their applications. How did they know that we were going to be, you know, discussing this, and is there five out there that just don't know about it?
Commissioners, I've, I've reached out to all of the, the individuals that have received money in the past to let them know that the money's available. I've also had a conversation with Mr. Jim Campbell to let him know that there was money available, so I don't know what more we can get out there to the existing programs and the existing treatment, or, let's, let's just say, how do I want to, not treat, necessarily treat them, but entities that would benefit from this money, in my opinion, have been contacted to let them know that the money is available.
Okay.
If there are more entities that we're unaware of, then they're providing services to our community behind a, a curtain, which is a little unusual that they would be doing that. I don't know if I'm explaining myself very well or not, but.
Well, that, that makes a change in my decision then, Clerk Mueller. I, I didn't realize that that conversation was already being had. I was just worried that, you know, somehow we're missing, you know, a portion that might need this funding or could be available for this funding. So if they've already been notified, then.
I guess the only entities that we really haven't communicated with is, like, directly with the hospital, directly with St. Luke's.
Tiffany Dobbs is on our, on our consortium. We have a very broad consortium, and we also have members who just attend, and Mr. Campbell's one of them. And the protocol is reviewed in the consortium meeting, it's sent out to all, it's not just sent out to the consortium, but I have a group of partners that I send the emails out to to me, I try to make sure everybody's covered, even if they're not regularly participating, so.
But to, again, I, I apologize if I came across rude, Commissioner Moffett. If you're inclined to have, you know, on a yearly basis, that's fine, too. I mean, that, that would be great for those that have asked for the money in the, in the past, to know that, hey, October 1st through November, get your applications in for any money that's available. That makes sense, too.
I think that's appropriate, Doug, because we have new people out there that aren't being contacted.
That's great.
Where do they start?
Once it gets systemized, then it'll work. That's for, for a couple of years. But again, I, I want to go on the record and commend the commissioners for creating the system that's in place, because I think it, it is going to be mirrored across the state. I, I really do.
And that is the feedback I not only receive from other, I'm actually presenting on this, Courtney Boyce is overseeing our opioid settlement funds at Central District Health, and the other counties are interested in what y'all are doing. Some on the agenda next month. And then HERSA, our federal funder, is so impressed with this. And I also presented, was requested, it's like the western states for HERSA, they asked me to present on this as well. So this, what you all are doing is innovative. So this is not happening most places or anywhere that I know of, so way ahead of the game here, so.
You guys are good clerk, it keeps us in line.
You do.
We do. And he, he's our brain, you know, for, especially on stuff like this, because this is outside our purview. Tell the voters, this is outside our purview. So I'm always just, I'm about, you know, making sure that things are balanced and equal for all. And so I just don't want somebody to come in and ask for the full $85,000, and then there's nothing available for anybody else that's out here. We have some really innovative projects right now that have been started, and I'd really love to see those grow and continue in the community, so.
And I think the benefit of having these reviewed by the consortium, the partners know what everybody is applying for, and what I hear is, I don't, I only, are they applying? Because if they're applying, I only want to take this much. It's a true collaborative. It isn't about.
Truly is.
And so they really work.
Exactly what we wanted to create.
Yeah.
They work so well on these recommendations back and forth. I think you can have a great deal of confidence, once the consortium makes a recommendation for you to approve it, you may have an occasion to override, not override, but add something to it, but you can have a great deal of trust that any opportunity that we know of out in the community, we will reach out to them, say, you know, these funds could be available to help you with that. So we're, we're constantly looking at a better way to, to, to get the maximum use out of these funds. Not, um, from the selfish point of view, I want to fund my program, from the truly holistic approach of the consortium, is how do we best treat the people in our service area with these funds?
That kind of information helps us tremendously.
So knowing that we've already seen two letters, is the funding, is it going to wipe out the fund? I mean, should we go ahead and fund these two, and then leave some reserve for this year, and then start the new process next year?
That would be a wonderful recommendation, Commissioner Moffett. Ignite put in for 15,000. They've run, we, the grant that, that they have currently with us, their, their referrals have gotten so big that they don't have enough to cover the uninsured and underinsured, so they put in for 15,000 for that. And then Courtney Hill for McCall Mobile Medical wants 10,000 to do crisis medication management right there on the spot. And so those are the two requests that we supported, and that, I think that would be a really good way to start the process.
Commissioners, I would agree, if the commissioners did fund those two requests, I, I just did some calculations, you currently have 90, 90,000, so that would take it down to 65,000 in available funds.
Okay. Well, let's do that then, let's keep them on the agenda then, and go ahead and.
Okay. But we could go ahead and approve this policy today, correct? With a minor change.
Do I make that?
I'll make that motion, that we approve the V Corp protocol for Valley Corp, Valley County Opioid Settlement Funds, with a minor change to the quarterly report for both evaluation and the quarterly data.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries.
Let's just work together for next year.
Awesome. And however we can partner, you'll see me again.
Make sure you create a fund for retired old farmers, because they're going to.
Mental health counselors, commissioners.
We should have got the.
As long as I can manage the fund, I'm good.
Okay, okay, you got it.
Thank you very much.
We'd like to do that same kind of a process with just the community funds that we choose.
It's a great process. Appreciate the partnership.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you both for all the work. Good to see you.
Bye, thank you.
Hey, we're going to move on. Cindy, come on up, the next agenda item is an action item. This is the man setback variance. And Cindy, you set this to us, didn't you?
Well, it was supposed to be in your package.
It feels like this is a cleanup.
Uh, where is it? If I remember right, this was just a side setback change.
V three twenty-four. V three twenty-four.
Yeah.
The way the P D O's.
V three twenty-four. And we're adjusting the side setback from seven feet, six inches to four feet, 11 inches.
Want a staff report?
Nah, hell no, we don't need a staff report. I'll go ahead and take the staff report. I'm just a fast-moving guy. Doug wants to get out of here.
Well, I'll talk fast then.
Okay.
Okay.
So V three twenty-four man setback variance, the applicant's Jeffrey Mann, property is addressed at 13023 Delane Road in the south half of Laughing Bill subdivision lot five. Jeff Mann's requesting a variance to relax the northeasterly side setback from the required seven feet, six inches to four feet, 11 inches for a covered structure over an existing well. The well is shared between the homes addressed at 13023 and 13021 Delane Road. The well is drilled near the edge of the property line between the two properties. At the time the well was drilled, the lot was larger, and it has been, it has since been split into two lots. A five-foot-high shed roof was constructed over the well cover with the verbal consent of both property owners to allow for access during the winter. It was later brought to the attention of the applicant that a variance approval was required to allow for the non-conforming setback for the well cover. Lot 5B was created in May of 1971. According to the assessor's records, the home was constructed in 1970, and the detached garage in 1984. The applicant states that existing setbacks for the residents in the garage are 10 feet from the front and around three feet for the side. This was unanimously recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission at a properly noticed public hearing. Legal notice was properly done. My Greeno Central District Health had no objections, Jess Ellis, Donnelly Fire Marshal had no comments or concerns, and nobody testified at the public hearing, either for or against.
This was a, one lot that was split into two, correct?
It was. It was one, one lot split into two, well, one lot, houses built, split into two, shared a well, right in the middle of both lots. And then the one gentleman, because I will skip to the, the pictures, because the picture's worth a thousand of millions.
There's pictures?
There is a picture.
Here's the pictures.
And it shows you exactly what it is. It's here. It's this cover here, the well is down here.
Yeah.
It's a, where the filtration systems and everything, and they put the cover over it to protect the well, so that in the winter, they can access it if they need to.
I'll make a motion that we approve the V three twenty-four man setback variance.
Are we done with all the rest? Staff report, is it, this isn't a public hearing, is it?
This is not a public hearing.
Okay, I'll second.
And I find it quite interesting that if the commission's recommendation is unanimous, and there is no opposition to approval of the, of the variance, then the board need not hold a public hearing. Is that available for other things?
No, only the variance, because we're running into where the P and Z was recommending approval, and then we're having a whole nother public hearing with full notifications to everybody.
Oh, I got you, okay. Say something, please. Hey, we got a motion, a second, to approve this variance, what was the number again? V dash three dash twenty-four. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And I would say, for the record, that this does not allow further intrusion for, by any structure into the setback areas without another process.
Right.
Okay.
Seven-foot setback. I have to do the same thing on my place. I have that seven foot or whatever.
Seven and a half.
Is there anything that we need to sign?
No, I'll write a letter and just send it to them.
Okay.
That'll be their official, they, you know, approval.
Okay.
See, look at moments.
And we're going to keep it going, the next agenda item is, uh, two action items. First one is the Atnip Excavation Professional Services Agreement. This is for snow plowing down at the prosecutor's office until building grounds takes that over, hopefully in March. Arnie, do you have anything you want to add?
So both of these contracts are for the merit title building basement where the prosecuting attorney's office is. They are both month-to-month.
Month-to-month.
So until Facilities is able to take over, which will probably be after the renovation of the upstairs, so.
And this one is for $65 per visit. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Atnip Excavation LLC Professional Service Contract for Snow Plowing at the prosecutor's parking lot.
Okay.
Who did second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And the next one is Nuclear Nelson LLC. This is to clean the prosecutor's offices. And what was this rate?
Two-twenty per cleaning. They come twice a month.
Two-twenty per cleaning.
Only twice a month? Yeah, that works. Said with a deep sigh.
Okay, so I'll make the motion, we approve the Nuclear Nelson LLC Cleaning Service Contract for $220 a month.
Second.
No, per cleaning.
A visit, twice a month.
Correct.
Two, $220 per cleaning times two times a month.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. You have anything to sign, Arnie?
I do. May I approach?
Absolutely.
No.
You have to throw it from there, make it a little airplane, she can approve.
No, I was going to ask the judge, may I approach?
Approach, you are? We'll call it, you're okay.
Here's. Nuclear Nelson.
I'm going to put a date on here, if that's all right with you.
It's written all right.
Thought we just suddenly got back on time.
Did you, I don't know that you guys got a copy of the floor plan that's being proposed?
I haven't seen it.
Down there? Shoot that along. Another idea for Kathleen's office, I do have them, they have them pencil in one here, but Brian and Brian's offices, there's that little storage closet right there, so we could take that out, make Brian's office here, another one, and another one. There technically could be three offices on that side, too.
There's filing cabinets in there that don't belong to us.
Oh, interesting.
So we could perhaps put a door there, I guess.
Make that the storage area.
Yeah. Or some of the filing cabinets out of.
Out of here, for the long-term storage.
We're actually moving you guys into that office.
Excited to see you were on it, I.
Doug, Doug has a vote. There you go, sir.
Thanks for bringing me.
Good. Okay, and I don't see anyone from the general public out there, so our next agenda item is an executive. See if anybody shows up.
Jeremy and Mike? I'm surprised they're not here already.
While you're doing that, Doug, why don't you mute us? Yeah, Mike's, I just saw Mike, he's in his office.